...called ready order. You would please say every other in our end of the case, you might ask, how do you view this question?
Let's fire ahead. Our most kind and gracious heavenly fathers, again to close with a word of thank you, we come to let us see the light of this day. Our Father, we beg, that thou wilt let us see the light of nothing, should not proceed us to thy glory. Our Father, we beg, that everything that's done in this faith, Lord, be that thy will, we pray in thy name. Amen.
Amen.
I believe this to be the life of the United States of America and to your Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item number two is reading of our last meeting minutes from last month.
We'll make a motion if it is set to the script.
We will move to approve or be accepted as written.
Second.
And a second. Any discussion? All those in favor, please raise your hand. Motion carries now. The next item, item three, or excuse me, item four is, or excuse me, item three is old business. We had a table item from last month. RZ eight dash eighteen dash twelve forty-nine. Would like to ask Richard what the county recommendation is or follow-up from last month's.
Thank you, Mr. Cagle. Let me just make sure, Virginia or Jeffrey? Okay, good. So the applicant, so we're here.
We're being announced, we're going to have to open up for public here on this rezone please.
Virginia and Jeffrey Jones submitted an application to rezone, seven point two seven acres on Highway one thirty-six, right at the Gilmer County line. If you're driving towards Gilmer County, you'd be on the right. Property's currently just vacant land, but zoned commercial. The district is HB Highway Business, and the applicants would like to rezone the land to RR Rural Residential with the intent being to have a new single-family residence on the property. The adjacent properties are mostly residential, mostly RR, and there is one touching HB property. For considering rezoning case, compatibility with adjacent uses, proposed RR may be suitable. Property value, I mean, subject property may have a reasonable economic use under the current district. Suitability, the proposal to residential or rural residential may be suitable in light of this area. The information on vacancy and marketing was not readily available to staff. Evidence of need, the proposed rezoning application may promote the public health, safety, welfare, public facilities impacts. Proposal to rezone with the intent being for a new single-family residence may not result in a use causing excessive or burdensome use of the existing streets or utilities. Consistency with the comprehensive plan. This area of northwest Pickens is identified for rural development, and the RR Rural Residential District and single-family residential development is consistent. Planning staff recommends that the application to rezone parcel zero one three zero two five zero zero two from HB to RR be approved.
Do you have any questions for Richard? Is Mr. or Mrs. Jones here?
Yes, sir.
Is there anything you'd like to?
That's exactly what we need.
Okay. Is there any questions for Mr. Jones, for me, but? Motion to approve. I've moved and said it to approve. Any discussion? All those in favor, please raise your hand. Motion carries now.
I appreciate your time, Mr. Cagle. Just for clarification for the minutes, we'll note that it is to recommend.
Recommend to approve. Yes, recommend to approve. That hearing is closed. Item four is new business. We have discussion on Pickens County, County ordinances. Would like to ask Richard what the county's recommendation is.
Thank you, Mr. Cagle. So I'll note that this is just discussion, there's going to be no decisions made here. This meeting anyway, the planning commission is only a recommending body, so they recommend to the Board of Commissioners, at the end of the day, when there's a rezoning or a potential tax amendment, like to make any changes to the county code ordinances, and only the elected officials answerable, you know, by vote to the citizens make the final decisions at their public meeting. So this is just the first of many discussion meetings. We will not have a November Board of Commissioners meeting, or Planning Commission meeting, but we probably will have a December meeting. So in two months' time, we'll come back here again and start discussing again about Chapter sixty-seven of the County Code ordinances, which is land use and zoning. And it was first adopted by the elected officials in May two thousand and five. What's in front of me here and behind me is our official land use intensity map, which acts as our zoning map. As you'll see on the colors, what you mostly have is the old Civil War colors of gray being agriculture, blue being RR Rural Residential, and then on the eastern end of the county, you've got a good-sized blob of Big Canoe and Bent Tree being whatever color that is. I apologize, I'm a little colorblind slightly, but whatever shade of tan that is, that is planned community zoning. So those are the big three that we have. And then behind most of you this way is our future development map that is part of the comprehensive plan. The comprehensive plan is something that the state requires that all cities and counties in Georgia adopt, but the comprehensive plan is not requirements to do anything. It is guidelines, and the future development map is a fortune teller's crystal ball of what the next ten years might hold for Pickens County. In other words, you see in southwest, west, northwest, and kind of north-central light green, meaning rural development. In northeast and east Pickens, you've got dark green, which is more conservation, kind of state lot, larger lot residential. Far east, you've got the existing Big Canoe and Bent Tree and surrounding properties that are affected by it. And then southeast Pickens, you've got a sort of a darker pinkish color that is Marble Hill. You've got Tate identified. And right in the middle, along five fifteen in county parts, you've got suburban infill, which is more potential mixture of uses, meaning not necessarily having two things going on on the same property, but you could have on or right adjacent to five fifteen residential beside, commercial beside something else. But again, that's just a map, it's not requirements. And so what we've done to start with is staff is, as directed by the planning commission, county attorney, and Board of Commissioners, I looked at what we have now. And so based on the existing zoning or land use districts adopted in May two thousand and five, and the rezoning cases since then, along with conditional use cases. And by conditional use, what I mean is, we've had a lot of, in the last few years, people who have agriculture property, but they want to do something unusual with it, and it's use-based, meaning it still has to come before planning commission and Board of Commissioners to approve, just like a rezoning case, except they keep the same zoning. Example, that would seem a lot, is agriculture, keep agriculture zoning, but want to have a party place, want to have a special events facility there. So agriculture, I looked at the number of parcels, but given the nature of agriculture having large-sized lots, even though the number of parcels is just nine point three seven percent, as you can see, on either side here, there's a lot of gray. I mean, I don't know the exact amount of land, but, you know, it could be between twenty-five and fifty percent, you know, give or take. I'm sure the tax assessor's office would have, you know, a really good sense, too, of just how much agriculture land we have. Bottom line is, it's a lot. So the question is, for properties that are zone agriculture, what uses may be appropriate, what uses may not be appropriate? That's something that we've been challenged to consider by the planning commission, Board of Commissioners, and County Attorney. You see all the other districts in front of you, and if you don't have this memo, I'll be glad to get you one or marsh you can. Does anybody not have it and want this? Okay. So we've really got just a couple of districts that are not used. I mean, we've got one, a state residential, there's one parcel, one that's special planned community where there's zero parcels, and so the question is, are they needed? Also, being that Pickens County is a rural county where folks value agriculture and residential, having two commercial districts might be unnecessary, especially given that one commercial district is very reasonable and realistic, and another commercial district is, is less workable. Meaning, the primary drawback of neighborhood commercial NC is that the maximum-sized building on your property is twenty-five hundred square feet. A lot of commercial developments, they want five thousand, ten thousand square-foot buildings, so most of the uses you could do in HB Highway Business, you could do in NC neighborhood commercial, the big main difference is size of the building. So a lot of people moving forward since two thousand and five have chosen HB. They've either rezoned from NC to HB or residential to, when it's commercial, HB Highway Business. So that's another question, do we just need one zoning district that's commercial? And what I'm going to do is turn it over to Ethan Calhoun, who is a state planner out of Rome with the Regional Commission. Every city and county in Georgia pays dues to be a member of a regional commission, so he's not being paid for by taxpayer expense at extra cost. We have to anyway. Again, every city and county in Georgia has to pay annual membership dues, and as part of those annual membership dues, he's going to help work with us at no extra cost. So he'll give a little intro remark, and then I'll open it up. The Clusties will have the first remarks, and then I'll open it up to anybody else. Thank you, Ethan.
Thank you, Richard. Thank you all for having me this evening. I think I recognize a number of faces here. Again, I'm with the Regional Commission, Richard just gave a pretty good example of what that is. Our offices for northwest Georgia are in Dalton and in Rome, so we cover the entire region and work a lot in area planning and development. And we've got a number of staff that work in planning at the Regional Commission. We all sort of have our own expertise, if you will, and land use is what I have sort of worked myself into in zoning. And during the comprehensive plan process, which we wrapped up a couple, several months ago now, it took about a year to put that together. A big part of that was that map in the back of the room, the future development map. And Richard did a great summary of what that is, why we do that, and of course, that that is not, your hands are not tied with that map, but it does give a pretty good illustration of kind of how you'd like to see that development move in the future with these rezonings and things like that. So it should serve as a pretty good guide for you. But there's still a lot of flexibility when you look at that map and look at your zoning ordinances, and there's still a lot of things that kind of teeter-totter back and forth. And looking at some of the things that Richard sent out in the memo about redundancy, unnecessary, maybe conflicting even zone districts that may not be necessary in yours, to simplify it, make it easier to administer, and are always great practices. And, you know, I'm a fan of keep things simple, simple as you can, so anytime that you can reduce redundancy, streamline process, and try to make that work is great. But sometimes you don't want to have, you want to have maybe a little bit more, a little bit more, I want to say flexibility, more specificity, if you will, so that you're not having to shoe-worn things all the time. So sometimes it's good to have some of those intermediate zones. But I think hearing some of the public comment, hearing some of the opinions of planning commissioners about having some of those things like neighborhood commercial, where, you know, it can serve as a great buffer between high-intensity commercial and residential, it may not altogether be necessary in this particular community. So I look forward to hearing the discussion, look forward to working with you guys as this process moves along. Thank you all for having me.
Thank you, Ethan. So the Clusty families here, I appreciate their time. They'll speak first, and I'll open it up to comments.
I came to a couple of the comprehensive planning meetings for this and recognized a couple of places that were here. And I've started to do some research on what exactly is a comprehensive plan and what is the regional commissions, who are the regional commissions, and who's in authority kind of stuff. And what I've discovered is that this regionalism is essentially central planning, which is essentially communism. And when you're putting yourself under the authority of these regional commissions, they, Georgia is actually separated into several regions. We're a northwest region, I'll give these up to you guys up front here, or pass this around so you guys can all take a look at this regional, regional map. And then from there, we're separated into an Appalachian region that splits Georgia off, the top couple, the top two regions in Georgia into the Appalachian Division, and which goes all the way from Mississippi, Alabama, Georgia, all the way up through the Appalachians. And they answer to this region, and then I, I lost track. I can't tell where they answer to, but let me get this forward to you. Eventually, we're actually answering to the United Nations. It's their plan, the sustainability, Agenda Twenty-One is the United Nations' plan to, for sustainable development. So, do you guys want to tell them? And I did the best I could on this, just looking at the internet and following the trail. I was unsure, right there where I have a, you want one, two? There you go. I'm unsure what happens in between where the American Planning Association is, but we are not even beholden to the people of the county under this comprehensive plan. It's a, we answer to the Northwest Georgia Regional Commission, who tells us what we can do. We pay dues by the head to them. Everybody in the county is assessed of, you know, it's like by the head, we pay them by force. It's not something we can agree to. There is state law, the state law says you have to have the comprehensive plan. That's as far as it goes with the state law. Did you have it, please? And then we, and then they answer to the Georgia Appalachian Regional Commission, who answers to the Appalachian Regional Commission, who, and I don't know where the Georgia Department of Community Affairs comes in, and I don't know where the American Planning Association chapter of Georgia. There's so many of these commissions, I don't even know who's answering to who. I just know eventually we're answering to the EU, and then to the Economic and Social Council and the United Nations. You know what I mean? So there's big red flags going up in my head when I see that, that we're going to change zoning, zoning codes to land use. It's just a small term, but it has big implications, that we're putting ourselves under the authority of this UN group that is planning to do the same thing to this country that they've done to Europe. I mean, it's the EU, we're answering to the EU. And so what we're seeing in Europe right now with Brexit is essentially what, that's, did you get one of these? That's essentially what I think we as, we the people, Americans, we have to know that this is going on. It's not, it's not anything we have to be afraid of because there's steps that we can do to keep ourselves from being a brim in it. Number one, the county has done a great job of not accepting these funds. They all have strings attached to them. Everything, every time you take money, any grant money, there's a big old string attached to it, and it'll end up being a noose to private property rights, because what it comes down to is private property is being eliminated, just like it is in Europe, just like we've seen around the globe. This is the plan of, and it's covert. I mean, it's not even something that we know about, because it's all good ideas. I mean, this planning is good ideas, but again, placing ourselves under an authority that's unelected, unaccountable authority is just a bad idea. So, any comments? Any?
I'd like to hear what this young man over here has to say about it, what he knows about it. You, you seem to be the outside head honcho around here, so.
I think, I think I can answer a few quick questions, just to kind of clarify a few things. I think this lays out a few things. There's a number of organizations here that I do recognize and we are due affiliated with. I will say one thing, just to clarify, the Regional Commission is not a governing body. We are essentially, a Regional Commission is comprised of local elected officials, chief elected officials. We basically are the stewards of a number of programs. For instance, there's the Area Agency on Aging for Northwest Georgia to assist with senior citizens and things to that matter. There's workforce development, so that assists with unemployment and things like that, to make sure that they're getting the people who have been recently unemployed back on the job market and not dependent upon welfare, things to that nature. We actually have a mobile lab, so if a local industry or something closes down, they go out. And then we have the Planning and Economic Development, and they work in grant writing and things like that. Part of that is funded through the Appalachian Regional Commission, she mentioned that as well. They're a funding entity for grants and different programs and things like that. Again, the Regional Commission, it's comprised of basically the elect, chief elected officials of our, our local government, city and county officials, and Chairman Jones is part of that Regional Commission, had been at twice in time. And so the Regional Commission doesn't set forth laws or anything like that. We essentially carry out the mandates of the state, things like that, to the degree that we assist local governments with this. So things like the comprehensive plan, the local governments are required to do that, even without the Regional Commission's affiliation. We come in to assist with that, just to make sure that it's getting done, and that nobody's being penalized or anything like that for those deadlines and things that are surrounded with that. And of course, the Appalachian Regional Commission is a federal entity, and they provide a lot of funding and things like that, and a lot of job creation-type funding that comes out of that. But again, the Regional Commission, we're not here dictating any type of development or anything like that. We're, I'm here to assist with what y'all need. If you have anything, I'll try and help to make sure that it doesn't burden your staff time and to try to assist with writing any of some of the changes that you might desire for your ordinance. But you guys are my boss, not vice versa. I just want to make sure of that.
And just something, I appreciate your time, Mr. Clusty, about land use and zoning, because it is a little unusual in the wording in Pickens County. In north Georgia, to get their toe in the water, some north Georgia counties, instead of calling it zoning when first adopted, White County is another example. White County just got zoning, but they also called it land use two or three years ago. And there's still some counties in north Georgia, unincorporated areas, that don't have any zoning. And they might have some regulations, like development regulations, but Fannin County, unincorporated Fannin County does not have zoning. Unincorporated Shetouga County, where Somerville is, does not have zoning. So a lot of communities would, would call this their official zoning map. In Pickens County, it's called the official land use map. In this instance, land use and zoning, just here in Pickens County, I can't speak for other places, but just here in Pickens County, the land use acts as zoning. They're both districts, so just like the rezoning case, we had HB Highway Business, that's a district. You can call it a zoning district, you can call it a land use district, but it's a district. And, you know, the rezoning was recommended by the planning commission to residential, to the RR Rural Residential District. So what we're talking about here essentially is, are there any needed just local changes to the existing local districts in unincorporated Pickens County? Are there any comments or questions right now?
Richard?
Yes. You mentioned to me the other day that what was the percentage of the property in the county that's devoted to either commercial or business?
Right, so it's, because I, this is by parcel, as you see in the memo. Again, even though agriculture is, for example, nine point three seven percent of parcels, agriculture is large parcels, so it's a lot of land. So by parcels, commercial and industrial is a total of about four percent of parcels. Now, there may be, you know, a few big parcels, but most commercial-industrial parcels are not that big anyway. So if it's one percent of parcels and industrial-commercial parcels are not that big, it's pretty small. You know, it just kind of goes to show you the preference that we heard over and over again in the comprehensive plan discussions, that Pickens County property owners and residents value low density, they value residential and agriculture, and they value private property rights.
Well, one of the things I understand as well is private property rights, I know it's mentioned in the comprehensive plan notes, that private property rights are to be protected. However, when you adopt the land use concept, then things like a parcel has to be three acres, or you're not allowed to do this or that. It becomes more burdensome to the private property owners, just because the guys upstairs are telling you what you're allowed to do. What happens is, they take our comprehensive plan, they put it together with the region comprehensive plan, then it goes up to the next comprehensive plan. Eventually, this comprehensive plan goes to the EU for approval. That's the danger. It's not anything, I mean, all these ideas are great ideas. The problem is, who's in authority over you? And one of the things in the document I put out about Agenda Twenty-One is, it's not law that we're allowed to resist as a community, the Agenda Twenty-One agenda of this whole comprehensive planning and, you know, oversight of the bigger and bigger regions, because it's, that's, I mean, we've all seen history. We know how communism works. It's the central plan.
I can choose this, Mr. Clusty? Yes, ma'am?
So what you're saying is we're losing local control.
Right.
Because.
Losing sovereignty.
Right, we lose our sovereignty, we lose perspective, because the global community won't have local perspective.
Correct. Where we can make decisions for our own community without them telling us what to do.
Now, what, Mr. Clusty, what would you say?
Oh, that back there, that's a suggestion, right?
Yes, sir.
What if they come in next year and say, well, that whole western county needs to be sustainable community, right?
They can do that.
And they say, that's a real strong suggestion, we got people that we got to bring in and make out a lives in. Right? The reason I say that is because that's exactly what happened in Prince County, Ohio. They brought them in to ruin property with the stack of the pack.
Yeah, it was a forced thing.
Ruin property rights, bringing in people that have no business in that neighborhood. Not saying, pretending, we didn't have to say about it. I don't want to happen here.
Yes, ma'am?
Just asking for some clarifying, that Appalachian, I don't remember the whole name of it, the Appalachian, whatever, I don't know. That is made up of people who do make decide, who do vote, unrepresentatives, right? That's made up of representatives? Is that what I understood?
No, there's no, there's no voting involved. We don't have any say. Citizens have no.
Right, with the Appalachian, they're just supposed to be enforcers, right?
They're, it's just a job.
Are they enforcers?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, and they're made up of representatives?
No.
Oh, okay, I missed that part.
So, yeah, so essentially, the Appalachian Regional Commission is made up of people who work around here in Georgia, or in Tennessee or something. They're individual people, but they are federal employees, and they handle and coordinate grants, and local folks can decide by talking to the elected officials that they choose locally, if they want their communities to apply for money. Because, you know, essentially, it's Big Brother, federal government or state government, and they've got money, but Ms. Clussey is correct when she says, when you apply for grants, federal, state grants, there are always strings attached. So the Appalachian Regional Commission does not make Pickens County Government, or City of Nelson, or, you know, City of Jasper, do anything. They have money, they have a, you know, small little pot of gold, and they say, you know, if you want our gold, you have to take strings attached. And Pickens County in general is, is pretty reluctant to apply for, you know, a laundry list of federal grants. But, right, that's just something, if you, you know, it's kind of a pay to play, you know, if you choose to go into it.
So, Mr. Clussey is right, where he's saying that if we adopt this, they can change it, and then we still have to go with it?
So again, the Appalachian Regional Commission is federal folks. Another group, like, say, the State Department of Community Affairs, that's a state organization. But locally here, this map here, the Official Zoning or Official Land Use Map, that's something that only the elected officials can adopt, and they are, you know, the local elected officials, of course, are answerable to the citizens, the registered voters of Pickens County.
Which is why we need to notice.
Yeah, I'm, sorry, yes, ma'am.
Okay, well, my name is Jenna Johnson, and I am a land broker, and have been since 1983 in Atlanta, and now I've been doing the canoe for a number of years. My understanding, and the way my life has worked, is that you have a community plan, the zoning map, which tells me what I can or cannot do. If I want to do something in an area that's zoned for agricultural, and I say, well, let's put a sewer plan in there and have a master plan community, then I come to the Planning Commission, and they say, it really isn't in compliance with the planning map that we've got, but maybe you've got some good ideas there. But it's the commission that tells me yes, no, or what I can do. My understanding is that what happens above the county level is not what a individual coming in, like this family did, to alter a zoning. That's all done locally, right? I mean, is that, in other words, what happens?
Right, your individual piece of property, yes, ma'am, you can choose to keep it, say, for example, in unincorporated county, as long as you want to. Nobody's gonna make you, for example, even if you're, right, touching the City of Jasper. You know, they're not gonna make you come into the city if you want to, because you want to develop it, you want sewer, you know, that's your local pride of choice, and the city's elected officials can choose to annex or not. Same thing with rezoning, if you choose to rezone your property here in the county, that's your choice. Planning Commission reviews it, they recommend it. Only the elected officials, the board of commissioners, can vote to change that. So essentially, you know, what we're talking about, of course, tonight is, are there any needed changes to our existing zoning or land use stuff? Yes, ma'am? Now, there's, okay, I'm sorry, I kind of missed. Do you have a comment or question, yes, ma'am?
Yeah, okay. I'm Ellen Alber, I'm a history author, and so I know a little bit about history. And so I get very suspicious when some federal folks, federal employees, come in and tell my local council that they're gonna help them do their job for no charge, and your hands aren't tied, and all they want to do is come alongside and help you. That makes me suspicious, and it should make you suspicious too. Central planning, historically, is never a good idea. It always sounds good, it never comes out good. I mean, in Russia, they had a food shortage because there were a shortage of tractors. Actually, there were plenty of tractors, but they ran out of the green paint, okay? And central planning said, tractors have to be painted green, and they were out of green paint. And so fields were left unplowed, crops were unplanted, because they didn't have the ability to make the decision to paint the tractors red, or yellow, or any other color that they had paint available. What we saw, something beautiful happened here with the Jones family, where they could talk to a commission of people who know that district that they're talking, because you've driven by there, you've seen the homes, you know what's there, and you can make a good decision that's good for them and good for the community. I would hate to see what they would have to go through, if they had to go all the way through all of these different agencies. And if you think that they're gonna just help you and not tie your hands for the next commission, and the commission after that, and the commission after that, you need to go back and read your history. It never goes that way. It never goes that way.
Let me, let me say something, if I may. Clayton, you and I came on, I think, at the same time, and Pat and Harold are almost veteran senior members here. I've been here, well, we've been almost nine years, or almost nine years, eight and a half, nine years. To this day, we've never had anyone from any governmental agency body come into this meeting, or send us any memo directives, whatever, saying you've given us any bait, so to speak, or telling us that we've gotta do something here and there. I know for a fact, that I think I can speak for most everybody on this, on this council or this commission, that if that happened, it would probably be torn up and shredded in a waste can, and tell them to take a flying leak, so. You know, so, you know, I can't, and I don't think, I've never heard of anybody in the last nine years, and I'm a native of Pickens County, and I've lived here most of my life, I've never heard of any governmental agency coming in to, when we were a sole commissioner or a board commissioner, you know, forcing them or requiring them to do anything that would go against the grain, because the Pickens, Pickens County have strong independence and love of property and love of our neighbor and so forth. So, you know, just to say that, you know, not saying that this is not what the ultimate goal is, Ms. Clussey, but.
Right, right, I understand that, and that's why.
And I appreciate you showing us this, and I mean, it, to a certain extent, makes sense, you know, I wonder where the state of Georgia comes into play here, well, I don't see anything about the US federal government coming into play. I'm here to tell you, if I knew the United Nations came to the door, I'd say, yeah.
Well, they did with this Comprehensive Plan. That is the United Nations.
Well, but, but again, there's nothing to be forced. Right, and I appreciate it, I really do. But nothing has been, and I went to every one of Ethan's meetings, and it don't, I'm not, as an example, he may have an agenda. Again, I say that with a grain of salt, as an example. I don't think so. I mean, I, you know, I went to almost every one of the Comprehensive Plan meetings. I didn't get that feeling, there was never any money thrown out saying, you gotta do this in order to get this.
No, no, the plan is consensus. When bringing a group of stakeholders to consensus for sustainability, these are all key words, that are documented key words, to essentially covertly take over the local community governing district. And that's why I'm here, because you guys have been doing a great job, and I don't want to see.
Well, and I think that all of us here will continue, as long as we serve on this.
Well, in 10 years.
I would be the first one, because I gotta, I'm fairly outspoken, I got a big mouth. I'd be the first one to be ranting, raving, and doing whatever to get the word out.
Right, but who knew this stuff before coming in here today? And that's something that, I mean, you're.
No, you know, I appreciate you giving us this.
Yes, ma'am.
Hey, Richard, my name is Lori Martin, and my family is the family state across from hospital, and I appreciate having the commission come, because I think it allowed a lot of opportunity for all stakeholders to come and learn about the different things. I think when, and I'm also enrolled state as well, and I'm business, when I look at this, one of the questions I have is, it looks like there've been very few anything approved in zoning, so I think the question I have is, who has submitted stuff that maybe didn't get approved? I know in the city, there's a lot of things that have been presented and whatnot, and that did get shut down. I appreciate the information, because my family, the BAM 26 is impacted by that. And so talking about grants, you were able to give me the information to get ahold of the Limestone Valley that's part of UGA, so they're trying to apply for a grant, because that was one that would be a loss of life. But I feel like, you know, as somebody that has family that, you know, has been here all these years and this and that, I feel like Pickens County has a huge opportunity to have smart strategic growth. I currently live in Forsyth County. I see this as a huge opportunity for seniors, and I think you have the ability to take what Forsyth and Dawson and these other counties own, because Cherokee County is coming right up. You have two major hospitals. And I know, and I'll just say it, I know that there's a lot of friction between the city and the county, and as landowners and whatnot, I think that there needs to be a bridge somewhere. Because in all the years that I've come here to visit my family and whatnot, you know, there still hasn't been a lot of growth. I mean, we have chicken restaurants, and I'm glad to see the Walmart, and I don't live right in the county, but I have family that does live. I think strategic, smart growth, you have water infrastructures that need to be established, and there's the other, so I appreciate, and I don't feel like that it is, you know, personally, I appreciate your graph, but this commission here can learn from other areas that this Appalachian community sees to try and give them good advice. So, that's just my stakeholder, and I appreciate what you're doing and listening to everybody, because I think we're at a crossroads.
And I think that's what Ethan, you know, and I appreciate Ms. Clussey, you and Ms. Clussey bringing this, but I think, you know, Ethan, that means that's what he was doing was more of a hand helping hand, but to answer your question on what's been turned down, we've turned down a number of rezon requests due to, a lot of it's from community input, from our neighbors' input. I mean, we've looked at that, and we try to respect property rights, but as my counterpart has mentioned many a times, our duty, we do that, and try to find a happy balance to help maintain the value of your property, and not hurt the surrounding property, and do what's best for the overall community, not just women and people.
Did the, did the senior living that has been a five or five, few months, did that finally get approved?
That's insane.
So that's where, you know, there's that fine line, sometimes it gets a hand extra and whatnot, so.
Now, may I, I may have missed, did I miss a hand, Mr. Clussey?
You have a question, because I'm new here, and I don't know the full history. Evidently, the state saw there was a need for everybody to have a commission, right?
No, essentially, like I said, you know, I mentioned White County to say that they just got zoning two or three years ago, and set up, when you get zoning, then you do set up a planning commission to look at a rezoning case before it goes to the elected officials to vote on it. And I also mentioned, you know, Fannin County, Shetuka County, they don't have zoning, therefore, they wouldn't have, they wouldn't have rezoning cases, and they wouldn't have a planning commission. And it's just a matter of choice, in that you can look 45 minutes south to here, up to Fannin County, and it's varying degrees. If you go to 45 minutes from here to Milton, they're regulated out of yin yang, and they like it that way. People who are residents or property owners, they choose that. And then Cherokee County is less than Milton, but it's got more regulations than here. Pickens County has less, you go up to Fannin County, unincorporated, there's no zoning. So it's a matter of degrees.
They had to have a commission.
Who had to have?
And that, I thought that's what you said, the law said, there had to be a commission.
Only if the local officials, and that's the elected officials with citizen input, choose to adopt zoning. And they did in May 2005, with land use districts.
They don't need the Northwest, they can.
So essentially, the job of any staff member of the state regional commission out of Rome, and any staff member with Planning and Development, Marcia, Linda, we've got some great guys, Rodney, Richard Bruce, Willie Fortner, in the Planning and Development Department, our job and his job is to help and listen. Our job is not to set an agenda. I don't have an agenda for Pickens County. I want to listen to hear what's good for Pickens County.
That is not the history, especially when it comes to land rights.
Right, and that's why I chose not to work for the federal government. I do understand what you're saying.
That is not the history of this country. Okay, and that's why we're here, to try and educate people on land rights. You know, I don't need the EPA coming out there and telling me, you've got water running through this property, you can't do this, and this, and this, and this, as long as I'm not poisoning it, get out of here, you know?
And that's, that's the big, that's the big push, because you do, you know, so if you want to build a house on a rural part of town, we have to buy three acres? I mean, is that?
No.
I mean, that's, right, that's, that's one of the things in, in the, in the Comprehensive Plan, a suggestion. And, and the whole point is that with this information that you guys have, get it to the commission, you know, the three body commission, so that there's some kind of official resolution to protect citizens' property rights against incursions into land use rights, property rights.
If I got a question, I don't want to get the car and have to pack up and do the washing.
Right, yeah, well, yeah, even when you look at, at the whole hierarchy of.
I'm totally happy with you guys making the decision.
Right, yeah, this is, we want our friends and neighbors to be making the decisions, and that's where there has to be a reservation for private property.
A couple of comments. I'm Roger Schultz, along with some others that are here, were heavily involved in the various meetings that took place in 2016 and 17 relative to the long range plan. The perception I have, and I've lived here full time for 30 years, is that most of the business and commercial development is controlled by the city in this county. Am I correct?
Most of the commercial industrials in the city of Forsyth.
We can sit here and plan all we want, but if the city isn't in work, in step with us, what we want, what it doesn't go anywhere, and it hasn't. So I would, what I'd like to see is more business areas developed that are not in the city, where the county can bring about change, as we see that, as opposed to being controlled by the development of the, what the city does or does not want. I have two children and four grandchildren that live here, and my grandchildren are ages 11 to 15, and quite frankly, there isn't anything for them to do in this county, in terms of recreation. There's school, but beyond that, there's, and there's some churches and some clubs, but, you know, there's no place for them to go do things, go to a movie, having a swimming pool is decent, it's open more than two months a year, do things that young people in other areas can do. And I think that's where maybe the county can do something in that area for the young people.
He brings up a good point. How does your water infrastructure, because I know that's one of the things that is going to drive, you know, businesses coming in, you, I think, how does that service, is that kind of basically what's going between, you know, on the city a good bit, is the water infrastructure?
So the good news on the county side is, the county has adequate supply of water, and has interconnectivity with our neighbors, and is adding interconnectivity, for example, has recently run a county water line up Jones Mountain Road to the county line, so that Gilmer County can come down, I'm having a moment, what are the names, is it Yukon? When it continues into Gilmer? Right, so, you know, things like that, and, and we don't have a county connection with Dawson County. That would be awesome, because Edwell Water and Sewer, you know, has a lot of capacity. But, but the county water department does a good job of not overextending itself, where, you know, it just goes crazy, because of course, if you build it, you know, and you extend water lines everywhere, and then you don't want a lot of growth, you could be hurting yourself, and, you know, now, again, what we tried to do, you know, in terms of Ethan and I during the Comprehensive Plan processes, in listening, we heard loud and clear that Pickens County folks like rural. They want residential and agriculture, and so now essentially, with the vision, with the fortune teller's crystal ball behind y'all here, this is looking at, what's the tools in the toolbox with zoning and land use districts? I hate to put you on the spot, but our historian, somebody who can provide good input, Mr. Dobbs, do you have any input?
To address what Roger said earlier about businesses.
To address what Roger said earlier about businesses, not that the city controls them, it attracts the businesses. It's a location, location, location thing, demographics. Any business that wants to come here and got smart people that look at credit card receipts, road demographics, and decides where they're going to build. City Jasper happens to have the interstate running through, old highway found here. That's why it's attracted there. We're going to continue to grow here because people are moving here from the urban areas because of our quality of life here. We have not destroyed Pickens County at this point. We're going to continue to grow simply because of our location. Thank all y'all for everything that you do and your planning and everything. But we're continuing to grow. Last 20 years, we've seen tremendous growth in this area and I don't think it's going to stop anytime soon.
Yes, sir. That was good to hear about the interconnectivity of the water system and so forth. To my understanding, other than Grandview Lake in the future, does the county have any water withdrawal permits of their own?
Not that I'm aware of right now.
Because interaction's great, but Edwell Water, Cherokee Water, they're selling us water. And if we could do better as a county, we've got a huge resource, a big canoe. And their utility is kind of 50% on account of water use. And they're typically taking, I think it's 500,000 gallons a day. So 250,000, that's lost or not metered. And they're permitted for over 2 million gallons a day with the water withdrawal permit. If you could combine that utility, Bentley, the city, and this under authority, and get rid of the name, call it First Mountain Water Authority, you could do a lot. And you'd be self-sufficient with your own water system as opposed to buying from Calhoun and Cherokee. And that's, I hope you're working towards that, but this is in Jasper. Prosperity flows, but water flows.
And kind of a wild card, it'll be interesting to see in the next, really short term, five years, what happens with Utilities Inc. being that, you know, their intention is to really make the big canoe water system through Utilities Inc., water and sewer, a better, more efficient, better operating and more spread out system. Who knows, you know, if they'll ever get to State-Tate Highway and go up and down State-Tate Highway? But there is that potential. And they've got, they're, they're adding employees, adding, you know, they're making plans and, you know, that's all on the private side. You know, just, just a note for y'all, there's a guy who started work for Utilities Inc. named Casey Early, so if y'all ever work with him, he's a good guy. I'm actually taking his place because he was more on the waterside. But he was playing a part of a planning and zoning person in Deersville. I'll be shifting over to Deersville. Marcia, Linda, and all the other planning development folks will continue to do a great job. So, so they'll see you along with Ethan in December. But, you know, I mean, I'll be glad to keep in touch with whoever. Are there any, like, final comments or questions? All right, well, this is, like I said, just discussion. Yes, ma'am.
I have these, these documents just for submission to you guys, all of you. It's basically just the officials and planners' resolution to protect citizens' property rights. It's, it's just a promise to put in the drawer, to put in the documents that say, as we plan for the future, that is growing. I mean, it's, I don't have any problem with the growth. It's just private property rights that need to be protected. And I, I just want to submit these to all you guys, just to look at, just to. One for you too, here, Ethan. It's just a promise that you guys know what's going on. And you can do it amongst yourselves and just let the community know that you're on the community side.
Yes, just like you mentioned earlier about the, when we first, when she first started speaking, that she was glad that y'all turned down a grant or something. What was that?
I just spoke with Rob Jones before and he said that he's been reluctant to accept federal money because he knows about the strings he has.
Oh, so that's what.
So he, he hasn't accepted funds when he could have at certain times because of his reluctance to know.
Y'all know about that? Of course you do, right?
So the specific road name project number, because it's not mentioned, y'all are not mentioning it, I don't, you know, I can't speak definitively one way or the other. But, I mean, I think we'll have to speak with you about it.
I'd like to ask Ethan another question. She went through this stair step, stairway deal that she could only get so far. Do you, are you able to go further than what she got as far as this agenda?
On the work chart, you mean?
Yeah. On the organizational chart, do you know anything more than what she knows? Or can you give us more information?
Well, you know, my understanding of it again is that a lot of those organizations on there don't necessarily control the other organization. They are connected in a sense. And, you know, you look at state, local versus state versus federal, and you see that hierarchy there. There is that, that does exist. You know, again, a lot of it is those grant funding organizations that apply that funding. And a lot of it, again, is for local assistance. And when, when our regional commission was established, it wasn't a regional commission. The North Georgia Regional Area Planning and Development Commission, I believe is what it was originally called back in the late 60s, early 70s, I want to say. And it was comprised of local elected officials that got together and said, you know, there's a lot going on right now. We've got growing industry, we've got growing population. We all need to sit down and talk to each other so that we're not all making the same mistake. And that's where they started. It was locally initiated, it did not start from the top down in that sense. And, you know, just based on things, you know, as any government, state, local or otherwise, names have changed over time from the Area Planning and Development, Regional Development Commission and to the Regional Commission. So it's changed names, we all do the same thing. It's pretty much all been the same. And that's one of the things, like, what I do is come here and listen to what's happening. You know, Richard being a local staff person, he's got basically the, the local information, what the needs are. And I just come in and try to make sure, work with Richard and make sure that we're getting things done and not making the same mistake as somebody.
I understand what we want is to keep it local. But who are these grant funding organizations that supply all the money and everything to that, that people accept the money from? Who are they that's giving the money and, and why?
Well, the, for instance, the Appalachian Regional Commission is a federal entity. And forgive me for not knowing all the information of that, but it's comprised of a number of states in the Appalachian region of the country.
I have all that information.
Are some of these not states or government entities that are supplying these grant funds?
Well, the federal government can allocate budget from its, from its budget funding to that Appalachian Regional Commission.
Is that one of the 18 enumerated powers of the Constitution to give money to grants, to local communities, to?
Not sure I can answer that.
Oh, oh, I can.
It's not there.
It's not Constitution.
But, so all this is, is the government doing this?
Doing what exactly?
Grant funding and stuff like that?
Well, yes, to a degree, it's.
To a degree, so there is some.
It's the money that the UN takes from us and goes and distributes around the world. And some of it, they, they give back to us. It's redistribution as well.
So some of it is grant funded from the UN?
Yes.
To these local and regional areas?
You had a question, sir?
Just a comment. I don't really speak southerner. So I come from Sweden and I came to the States and we have a lot of central planning. I came to the States because I love the entrepreneurship that was here. I want to see that, and I was in New York, California. And when I studied at University of Michigan was, and I traveled all through the country, I discovered that there are some communities that are very prosperous and others are not. Some have a lot of opportunities, but nothing happens. And that fascinates me. And it seems to come and go. This is a very, I mean, the responsibility you have here is extraordinary, is extraordinarily complex. But it is to respond to all the needs of the citizens. And what I found was that the communities that are most successful are those that can tap into the needs of the, of the local community and respond to their needs and develop something that is better than anything else. Does that make sense? And that means, when, when I hear, and I must, might misunderstand everything because my Swenglish is also. But what I hear is a discussion about, do we need neighborhood commercial, highway business? And when you look at that concept, if you look at it, is it meaningful? Is it meaningful overall? Is it meaningful from the community standpoint? So I agree with what you're saying. I believe 100%, no one can come in and dictate. But ideas are dangerous and they, they zip in. And if the whole drive of the commission is to look at the people and say, we are going to do the best any, any community we can do. And we can work with, we can, whatever, to do the best we can. And that is where your input come from. I think that will make you a fantastic community. The danger is, like in Sweden, we have everything, we have everything centralized. You don't have that powerful growth that you can see in the rest of the communities.
Any final comments on the planning commission?
Keep it local.
No problem.
Any more, that ends item four, we'll go into item five, any more comments? I do, Richard, I came in here tonight thinking we were going to talk about, you know, we've had some situations come up here that, that we have not previously anticipated. I guess it's a fair way of saying that, okay? So we were trying to make the best decisions we could with what we were doing. So we tasked you, the department, with saying, okay, let's talk about a way to work on this and how can we, how can we adapt to these requests in a fair way to address them? Okay, we hadn't seen them before and we're starting to see them. How can we address that? I don't know what this was. I mean, I'll be perfectly honest with you. Did, are some of these people invited at your request?
I appreciate your time. So the.
Yes or no?
I know you remember.
Were some of these people invited at your request?
Yes, absolutely, as stakeholders that were involved in the conference of plan, yes, sir. Because if you remember, the county attorney specifically asked planning commission, do you want staff given citizen input? I'm not going to do a Big Brother plan, I am not. You know, so do you want a bunch of people and planning commission and board of commissioners to discuss any proposed changes to Chapter 67? And the answer here was yes, board of commissioners was yes. So this was an open forum discussion, not, I'm not going to do Big Brother.
An open forum discussion that you apparently stacked deck here, I mean, obviously. You know, you know, you know, good and well, knowing the bodies on this board, nobody is going to go for that kind of stuff. I mean, it's ridiculous to think that we're going to allow, I mean, these are disputes between, can you have a chicken farm here? Can you, can you do this or that? This is exactly what we address between people. You know, it is very local, it's as local as you can possibly get. So this, this, this business that you brought here tonight, I'm very disappointed in you. I'll be, I'm just going to say that, so, and I'm done.
Yeah, I'm disappointed in you and your reaction.
Sir?
Sir?
I have.
You know, we're, we're done with public comments right yet. We'll, we'll get public comments in a moment. So, you know, we will keep order here.
Yes, sir.
You will have your moment to speak. Any other, Jim, or please finish. I'm done, Mr. Jim.
Yes, so basically we will be looking at, when we finish, is what we're going to be looking at. So we'll now be, that area in here that will cover venues for these weddings and things like that.
Which is what we were trying to do.
That's what I thought. So it's not, it is that, and it's not just that. Mr. Landrum asked, he wanted, and the board of commissioners and the planning commission wanted, not just to look at, because yes, we can look at just special events facilities. But there was, it was more than that. Mr. Landrum and the board of commissioners also asked, because Chapter 67 really has not been significantly revised since 2005 when it was first adopted, they asked, can we start looking at, that's why I put this together, here's all the uses and here's comparing the uses to other North Georgia comparable counties? Not, I'm not going to compare Pickens County to, again, Milton, because Milton regulates the heck out of stuff. But Pickens County compared to Dawson County, Gilmer County, Gordon County, Lumpen County, what uses do they allow, what do they not allow? What do they say you have to have a conditional use permit? And we can also, for sure, get into the details of what might be good conditions within a conditional use permit. You know, everything has to end at a certain hour, everything has to have parking, this or that, the other. I mean, that's, that's for sure something that's open for discussion. The more regulations you get, the more you put yourself in a little box. And so far, Pickens County property owners and citizens have said they want low regulations. But if, if it's the desire of the elected officials to adopt more regulations, I mean, I'm neutral on that.
I have no idea what you're talking about because what, what we were talking about here, what I thought we were going to talk about here is very specific thing. Can we eliminate some classifications? That's great, can we? Do we, if we eliminate one, does that mean we need to, if we eliminate neighborhood commercial, do we expand highway, et cetera? Those are the conversations I thought we were going to have tonight. I, I still have no idea what I just heard here. This, this, to me, is bizarre.
I didn't know who was going to speak and who was going to speak.
But you just said you.
I invited probably 200 people and 20 came, and I had no idea what they were going to talk, I'm sorry.
About 20 people here, there's about 20 people here, I would say. So these are all your guests?
Again, I invited about 200 people, about 20 came. I didn't know what they were going to talk about.
There's about 20 people in the room.
Now, I said I invited 200 people.
I heard you say you invited 200.
Right.
So what part of public discussion disagree with?
No, I think, I think where the confusion comes in is that the last meeting, if I'm wrong, please somebody correct me. One of the issues we've been having the last primarily 18 to 24 months, we've had a lot of special use permit or requests come in here. For instance, a couple of months ago, we had one behind Philadelphia Baptist Church on Philadelphia Road. So we had one of the special events being, you know, we declined that due to the fact that it was right there at the church. We had another one near Law Swamp Church, which we approved because it was, you know, further away and it was going to be more limited, small. We wanted some guidelines on what other counties are doing for all these special use. Because I bet you we've had in the last 10 or two years, maybe 10 to 12 of these special use permits, we've been asking for help. And that's what I think Mr. Fowler is alluding to, because I kind of thought that was Mr. Ethan.
Yeah, and I appreciate y'all's time. Subsequently, I was asked by the board of commissioners and Mr. Landrum to not just look at that, but Chapter 67, which includes this. But I was, they, they asked me to do this, they, in a work session, the board of commissioners, I mean, I just do what I was asked to do.
Well, I appreciate that, Richard. And we're not, I'm not, I mean, I don't think any of us are upset with you. It's just that we were, thought that we were going to finally get some recommendations on how to handle something specific that we have been asking off and on for the last two years on as far as what are other communities, counties doing on these special event requests? And, and what are some guidelines that, you know, help, help us? Give us some recommendations? And, and, because, you know, it has, I mean, it's been just, I mean, it seems like four or five this year and four or five the year before and what have you. So that, I think that's where Mr. Fowler's disappointment is coming from. We thought that we were going to get some, somebody here from Northwest Regional Commission or Department of Community Affairs to give us some recommendations on.
Right, part of the challenge specifically about agriculture is there are a lot of uses that may be allowed or may be prohibited in agriculture. And the bigger question, yes, which includes special events facility, is through, for the entire agriculture district, what's appropriate, what's not appropriate? And right now, in the two, because it was put in in 2005, there weren't a lot of special events facilities in 2005. So right now, it's called conference centers and retreat centers. And that's a little vague. And Mr. Landrum on the legal side is looking into that and, and he's been looking into that for a while. But it's, it's more than just special events facilities. It's, the agriculture district in particular is probably, I mean, it's a great district, district in particular is probably, I mean, it's a great district, but the question is, you know, because there's a lot of, you know, potential...
Well, because it's somewhat, for lack of a better term, vague.
Right.
You know, a lot of people try to set up a commercial statue in an agriculture district.
Definitely.
I'm sorry about that. Follow me. I mean, one of the things that I thought we were going to see is a chart like this, shows what are some of the different conditions other counties have as options for their special use permits, that's one of the things we talked about.
Right, and typically, most of these...
I wasn't thinking we were going to start with the 50,000 foot elevation.
Right, and these communities, they don't have, they don't even have what Pickens County has. If you look at really heavy duty, intense regulations on conditional use, they're really not that much more than what Pickens County has. They ask, what's your parking plan, what's your hours that you're going to be open, what's your times that you're going to be open, what's the lighting like, what's the buffer like, and we already have that in there, and that's part of the criteria, that's part of the review, that's part of the staff report, but we can always ask, you know, adopt more, if y'all want to recommend it and the elected officials choose to adopt it, we can add more, comparable counties don't have additional criteria requirements, they just don't, I mean, I have to...
Nobody's ever talked about more, it's talking about clarifying so we can make a better decision. If you ever want to go from a more intensive use to a less intensive use for me, bam, unless it's something weird, you got it, I mean, pretty much, okay? What, incorrect, I'm speaking only for myself, what I was looking for was some kind of criteria to decide, okay, we've got these, and special events did pretty much spawn that, because that's been the biggest thing we've dealt with in that criteria lately, but give us something to work with, the UN and all this other stuff, I don't know what I'm...
I don't know, I was not expecting, I didn't know any of this was coming, but it's a public meeting, it's a discussion, I'm glad they were there, they had the opportunity and right to say...
Nobody's questioning that, absolutely, nobody's questioning that.
You have...
I'm talking about you and what we tasked you with.
Yeah, we're talking about two totally separate things, I'm glad, personally, I'm glad you all are here, whether I agree with you or not. I want more community involvement, most of the time, unless it's something, a big special event permit, you say, usually, at best, we have...
Three people here, yeah.
I'm just using that example, sir, we have a property owner here, and maybe...
And somebody from the property.
And somebody, yeah, from the press and married.
And registered to inform.
No, 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 and you did not offend.
I don't want to offend you, I don't want to sound like that, but what I'm telling you is, for me personally, and I apologize if I offended you, I didn't expect this, this is not what I came here for tonight, and this is not what I saw on my agenda, so that's my reaction, so I appreciate your information.
We're glad you're all here. I mean, thank you for coming, thank you all for coming, and thank you all for speaking, because I wish we had more community involvement and people in our neighbors coming in, I mean, we all have busy lives, I get it, so, but it, I think we were going to make this a little misunderstanding, like the communication on maybe what we were requesting and what Richard understood what we were requesting, so that's... I'll give you just...
I just want to apologize for Mr. Fowler for my reaction to his reaction.
You don't owe me a pardon.
You don't owe us any pardon, but thank you for that gesture, I mean, all right, so any other comments or comments?
Yes, so in November, we will actually get into the details of this, maybe get into November.
There are no scheduled cases for November, so the next meeting, if we get cases, which we should get at least one case, would be in December, yes, ma'am.
Okay, so at that time, we get into more than that, we won't get rid of the neighborhood commercial, which I see a good use for the neighborhood commercial personally, I live on the West End, we have a little West End grocery store, it makes those guidelines, and if we move into highway business, and anything could move in, add in and into our little agriculture community, which I'm always trying to protect the agricultural communities.
Good point, very good point.
You know, so I see a reason for that, but I mean, this is one of the things that I want to know when we're actually going to get down to discussing, you know, the details on this, and what I'm interested in, no one thinks it was going to be December or early yet on this, so do...
Yeah, I appreciate it, I appreciate your time, I apologize that...
I appreciate you for all this work.
I just got a good opportunity to go to Adairsville, so this is my last week here, but I appreciate y'all's time, yeah, so I'll be glad to help you in Adairsville in December.
What did you say?
No, no, no.
Yeah, I just got a good job opportunity, work for the city of Adairsville, so, but, yeah, I appreciate y'all's time.
Well, we appreciate your, what, three years, somewhere around three years? Three and a half, yeah, we appreciate your detail, your work that you've done, and appreciate that a lot, so.
Thank you, Richard.
Or any other more comments, and we wish you well. Okay, public comments, any public comments? Sir, did you have something else you'd like to...
When are y'all going to get around to doing something on Pleasant Union?
What are you regarding what?
Uh, paving or something?
We don't have nothing. We don't pay, we recommend zoning.
And you recommend us come out there and do something.
Yeah, you need to go to the board of commissioners, and that's totally out of our realm. Sir? I'd like to thank Richard for his service, I think he's done a job, and I think he's a casual...
I concur.
And I think you've done a great service in the last years, for the majority of the residents.
I think the commissioners meeting, is it next, is it Thursday night? This Thursday night, is that their meeting?
Nope.
Next Thursday.
You're just starting to meet by...
Commissioners meeting next Thursday night, so if you want to come to their meeting... It's not going to get to you, I can tell you that. Is there any other public comments? Okay, the last item is adjournment.
I'm in motion to be adjourned.
Have a motion, a second, any discussion, we need to discuss this. All those in favor of adjournment, please raise your hand. Motion, carry media's adjournment. Thank you all for coming out.